Good evening. Before I call this meeting to order, I want to announce that due to COVID-19, some commissioner's staff and the public are attending remotely or on-site. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak so the public that is observing knows who is speaking. This is critical given the number of remote participants and is current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's Office. Due to COVID-19 requirements, the public is allowed to participate by Zoom or submit comments by email prior to the meeting, and those comments will be included in the record of the meeting. The public also will have an opportunity to provide brief comments from the lobby of the Menzville Office Building. Call to order, I will now call this meeting to order. I ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. You are hereby notified that I've called a special meeting of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County in Kansas City, Kansas, to be conducted virtually on Monday, February 7, 2022, immediately following the conclusion of the Neighborhood and Community Development Standing Committee regarding submission of a Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act application. Roll call, Davis.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McKernan.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane. Kane. Markley.
Here.
Stites.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Kane again.
Here.
Thank you. Next, I'll ask the clerk if there are any revisions to night's agenda?
There were no revisions, sir.
Thank you. Item one, resolution authorizing submission of the Unified Government's loan application under WIFIA. We have one item of business this evening under the administrator's agenda. Before us this evening is a resolution authorizing submission of the Unified Government's loan application under the Water Infrastructure Financing and Innovation Act, also known as WIFIA. I'll ask Administrator Harrison Lee to introduce staff that will be present tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have an opportunity to look at federal funding to assist us with some of our infrastructure needs. Presenting tonight will be the Assistant County Administrator, Melissa. And with that, Melissa, you can begin the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Tonight, I am here to put some, a little bit more meat around our WIFIA request and to kind of run through how we've gotten to the date that we're at tonight for a special meeting. So I'm going to start the PowerPoint and see how this goes. There we go. All right, perfect. So back in around 2013, we entered into a partial consent decree as the Unified Government with the EPA related to our combined wastewater and stormwater overflows into our rivers and streams. This was something that led to almost another decade's worth of work by the, by staff and the governing body, trying to work on a best way to work through not only the partial consent decree, but the possibility of entering into a full consent decree with the EPA. And around 2019, about six years into the partial consent decree and well into our negotiations with the EPA, WIFIA was brought forward as a concept to help address our infrastructure needs. Not only would it address things like stormwater, but it also addresses things like our wastewater infrastructure, as well as streets, broadband, and much more. So just prior to the final consent decree, staff from the Unified Government went to Washington, DC to actually discuss the possibility of the Unified Government participating in the WIFIA program. We asked a lot of questions on this, on this trip with the EPA and specifically discussed with them the basin studies that we were going to be working on, and those were in areas of our most disadvantaged portions of our community. So not too long after we did finalize our consent decree with the EPA, which is referred to as the IOCP, our overflow, Integrated Overflow Control Plan. So just as a recap, because we've gone through this a few times, but we do have a few new governing body members, want to express what WIFIA does allow the Unified Government to do should it choose to participate. It is a borrowing program. We often want to call it a grant, but it is really not a grant. It is a borrowing program. The UG must match 51% of the dollars borrowed through this program. Now, there's a lot of different ways in which you can match. So I want to be clear that it's not pure monetary at the end of the day. However, at this point, we haven't entered into the third phase of work on this program. We are in phase one, so we do not know what that will look like, which means there are many more bites at this with the governing body should we choose to move forward tonight. It's a single fixed rate, which is a great rate through the US Treasury. We have 35 years to repay, which is beyond the traditional repayment. And we have five years to start our repayment after construction, which is a significantly different way of doing lending than you would in our normal GO. And the interest is not accrued during that period or even the five-year deferment. So back on December 2, the governing body did choose to do the match that we have to be able to show ahead of time with the state's revolving loan fund. However, that 70 million, which we will discuss later, is not necessarily going to be completely utilized because of the flexibility in how we can match those dollars that we're borrowing. Here are the eight basins that are included in our WIFIA program as was submitted back in, in 2020 and approved on the 8th of January, 2021. Again, these are in our historically distressed neighborhoods and also where we have our integrated overflow control issues. So just to highlight some of the things that were submitted as part of that application that we put in back in 2020 and were approved to move forward into phase one, which is what we're in right now, things like separations of combined sewers, green infrastructure projects, which help address those in a different way than just pipes in the ground, also curb and gutter repairs, things like bridge repairs or replacements. Even Leavenworth Road, Phase Two Stormwater was included as part of this program. But it also pairs it with a community investment. Parks and trails that would be in the green spaces or greenways that would be created, as well as rehabilitation of land bank, which we just spent some time on here tonight in our prior meeting, looking at maximizing those partnerships for workforce development, especially with our minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, local labor, and then, of course, trying to maximize other funding opportunities through this investment with WIFIA. So basically leveraging, leveraging, and leveraging. So just as I noted before, the concept came to us in late 2019. And then in March of 2020, after our trip to DC, we started partnering with a major engineering firm in the region to help us put in our letter of interest. In July of 20, that opened up with the EPA and we were able to submit or start working on our submission. And we put in for $130 million program on October 1st of 2020 with support of the UG Commission. We did receive the acceptance into the program a little over a year and a month ago, or about a year and a month ago, and that put us into what we call Phase One, which is up to a year to complete application and payment of the fee, which is why we're here tonight. This is kind of a snapshot of where we're at in the overall phases of the WIFIA program, which is definitely complex. It's not something that follows kind of a normal order of progression that we're used to from a governing body work or from staff work for that matter. So we had a pre-application period where the stars at is the transition over into what they call Phase Three, where it's an evaluation with the EPA intensively of the application submitted and of those things that we mentioned on that previous slide that we looked to do in our application. So this is kind of a little bit further breakdown. So in Phase One, what we were working to do is put together the finalized application. Staff took time to prepare that over the course of quite a few months in 2021 and had up until just the 8th of January, 2022, which has passed us now, to submit the application and the payment. Back in November, staff at Standing Committee presented a resolution of support that was needed for the state's revolving loan fund, and on the 2nd of December, that was agreed to by the governing body. At the same time, I believe muddying the waters a little bit, we brought back the stormwater rate conversation, and we'll discuss that a little bit further in this presentation. But we did discuss that WIFIA was not dependent on a change in the stormwater rate, although it does help WIFIA do more. So I just, I want to make that very clear. So you don't have to have it, and you can still make a significant impact on infrastructure, but you can make a bigger impact with the rate change. And that's where things probably got a lot confused for, for all of us. So here we are currently. Staff did not submit the, the application, which it could have on, after the second meeting in December, because it was waiting, because the governing body had moved forward the conversation on the stormwater rate. So that's kind of how we also got to where we're at today, where we haven't submitted the application and we haven't submitted the payment, and we're coming back to touch base with you all and to remind you of the options that we have before us. So on the 3rd of January, staff sought an extension from the EPA to submit the application and the payment, and it was granted till 2/8 of '22, which is tomorrow. So tonight, you will consider the $100,000 payment and the resolution that supports it. But what would happen if you did that after? And I think that's kind of the critical element for all of us to understand and that staff has really worked hard to pull together. That would send us into Phase Three, as we saw on the chart, and that is the time in which we work with the EPA on what the schedule looks like for those eight basins. It's the time that we develop performance indicators to be able to show that we're doing what the EPA was hoping when they granted us the program, negotiations in the first place, and establish those budgetary and financial goals that ultimately would be brought back to the governing body to determine if they wanted to do a resolution of support to continue moving forward. However, to get to that phase, the $100,000 is non-refundable and has to be paid by tomorrow. And then Phase Four, after that, if the governing body continue to move forward, is more negotiations. And then finally, in Phase Five, we get to the loan approval, that partnership with the EPA on what we're going to be doing for our work, which again, these are all the opportunities where, in which we look at what our rates are between wastewater, stormwater, regular general fund participation, whatever the governing body would want to do. And that's going to determine the final efforts and the final work of WIFIA for the Unified Government should we choose to proceed. So I want to just kind of double back on the connection to the stormwater rate, just to make clear, because I don't think it was at points along this journey. WIFIA does do more with the change in our rate, but as does everything if we pay more. So it's just the, that's the bottom line. But it is not dependent on us moving forward that the stormwater rate change. So I want to make that very clear. This body, the governing body, does not have to change the stormwater rate to participate in WIFIA. But the scope of the work will change as part of, of the planning process in Phase Three, because we must align the dollars that we have, the matches that we have, the in-kind with our ability to pay and with the EPA's competence in our ability to perform. Again, the stormwater rate is a vehicle for providing a more sustainable program. However, WIFIA is a small portion of the overall needs that we have in infrastructure and in our stormwater. And just here is to highlight some of the information, again, that was presented back in November and December. On the left, you'll see what would happen if the rate was changed with stormwater and what would happen if it was not. But what you can see is we'd be able to do about 15% of what was submitted on stormwater as part of WIFIA without a rate change, except for we moved some really critical projects to some of our neighborhoods, which I just want to make clear. Jersey Creek and Argentine would be eliminated just due to their pure cost and the amount of work that is within what would have been 100% if a rate was adjusted for WIFIA. And then also a reduced community-paced partnerships. And I would love to spend more time on that. I don't think we've highlighted that enough. But I do want to say that the community-based partnerships is about growing jobs in our community. It's about partnering with our neighbors to improve our green infrastructure, and it's about basically creating a new pipeline of work for folks here in our community. With that, staff is requesting the commission give consideration to allowing the $100,000 non-refundable application fee be paid tomorrow and for staff to continue into Phase Three, working to find the plan that would work for us to use WIFIA as a unified government.
Does that complete your presentation?
Yes, Mayor.
Any members of the commission have any questions or comments?
Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your presentation, and I know we're under a tight timeline. I guess I'm a little surprised that we have the $100,000 available when for the last year and a half, we've been told we didn't have any money for anything. So it's not that I'm not supportive of the WIFIA program. I'm just really pleased to see that we were able to find $100,000 in which to apply for the WIFIA grant. My concern was that there was no money and that we would have to finance that. So obviously, the new administrator has been able to identify some funds that may be available to apply for the WIFIA grant.
Thank you. Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the explanation, Ms. Seeben. Thank you so much for walking us through that timeline again. And I think we all know that we've been working with the EPA now, like you said, for going on a decade. So a lot of this is ongoing for quite some time. And, and WIFIA is a great opportunity to help solve that combined stormwater sewer problem. And so I would definitely be in support of authorizing the spending of the application fee. I can't imagine we didn't know the entire time WIFIA was in front of us that there was an application fee that would need to be paid. And we have this opportunity now, and as you said, no, it does not solve every problem. It is only a fraction of the work to be done, but it's a really important one. And as you mentioned, the interest rate and repayment, you don't find that anywhere else. And so it seems counterproductive for us at this time with our enormity of infrastructure needs that we face, that we would turn away from an opportunity like this. So I would definitely support the payment and the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Kane.
First of all, I support this. I think it's a great idea. I also support that, that we hire as many local contractors as possible. And to the new administrator, if you found $100,000. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
I've got a question, Ms. Seeben. What was the original amount that we thought we would need in regards to this program? Because if it's my understanding, there was rate structures and fees associated that were presented to the commission as well as myself at some point. And do you remember what that amount was?
Well, the original amount that we submitted for was $130 million rounded. And then our match, as I noted on one of the slides, would have been 71, or 70 million. That's the 51% match. And again, in-kind negotiations, prior actions that we've done all count in some method or means towards that at the end of the day. So, but the rate structures that were used for that, I would have to defer to staff on how the stormwater rates and wastewater rates. Our wastewater is tied to our consent decree that we entered into. So that's set, and staff would know that when they were working on it. And stormwater, I'm going to have to defer to one of you on how we modeled with the application. Did we model it with a rate change? Yeah, we did with a rate change, and that's why the scope would have to change.
I get that. So what was that total amount that was being?
$130 million worth of projects. Now, not all of those are stormwater, mind you.
Well, just what we're talking about for the sake of what?
The application right now is with the $130 million, but we will be negotiating with the EPA in Phase Three on what the total is in final. If there's no change in the stormwater rate, that number will come down.
Okay, I'll come back. Commissioner Stites.
Stites, District Seven. What, if any, work will be performed or has been identified to happen in District Seven?
The districts were presented on the first, the map on the first, if we can bring that back up. And if District Seven's your district, this is only in KCK and in the far eastern portion of the community.
Okay. So is this a?
The like second slide, third slide.
But the county would be responsible for payback, correct?
No.
No?
It's all city.
It's all city? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bonner and Edwardsville are separate.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, thank you all for, for presenting that. I just had a question about the interest rate of the loan. Is there any information on kind of what that structure is going to look like and how much? I mean, this is still an amazing opportunity, just given the amount of leeway and the time that we have. My goodness, 35 years is a long time, but any idea on the interest rate?
It's attached to the Treasury rates. Is Kathleen on here? Guess it's not. Sarah, I'm going to turn this over to Sarah Schaefer.
Good evening, Sarah Schaefer, Public Works. We've modeled 1.3 to 1.8% in the financial models that we have run for WIFIA and the SRF. And if Kathleen is on, she's much better at explaining how the state treasury interest rate is determined at closing.
Mayor Kathleen is available.
So the, the amount that they've modeled is the likely amount that would, would be the rate at the time. And just so you know, the GO bond rate is around two to two and a half. So, so it's, it's a very favorable interest rate.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, that's, that's good, and I appreciate you all providing that information. And, you know, we do have a lot of other opportunities. You know, I know for the ARPA Subcommittee, we're also having conversations about funding some of these projects. I know we're going to talk about BASE this week, which I'm excited about, as well as, you know, the infrastructure bill that's coming from Congress. I don't know if there's any updates. Has there been any updates on that in what we would receive or what that process will be?
Can I just add one more thing? So once we, once our application is accepted, then you lock in the interest rate. And so even though we issued the bonds out into, or the, enter into the loan out into the future, that low rate is still in place regardless of what the rate is in the future, just so you know. So, and, and rates are expected to increase, so.
And this is for the WIFIA program should you choose to move forward. There's the lock.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
Let me continue my question. I'm in support of WIFIA. I'm also in support of making sure that our infrastructure needs are taken care of. Well, before I go there, Commissioner Bynum.
Mayor, thank you. I apologize. I, I was going to make a motion, so I want to let you make your comments.
Thank you. This is a question and probably a concern for me. As I've gone through this process with staff, you've shown a process in the PowerPoint. It looks good. But the messaging to me seems to be in conflict with the messaging that I received from, from the onset, which is, is that there was no money, which is, is that there were deadlines that have passed in regards to WIFIA, which is, is that we needed a certain dollar amount in the hundreds of millions. And somehow, that's all, we found the money that at one time didn't exist. We've passed a deadline that was there, and, and now we have monies that, that we're going to negotiate, appears, if my understanding is correct, as a later date. I just want some kind of explanation, not just for this mayor and this commission and our staff, but for this community, on how we got that message so wrong and how we got to this point to where everything is great, but we were in dire straits prior to where we're at today. I have an issue with that, and, and I'll speak to that issue once you can give an explanation to that question that I have.
I'm assuming you're directing that towards me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this is Melissa Seeben. So as to the $100,000, there's never been an issue with the application fee that was set aside several years ago. I don't remember that being a conversation over the last couple of months. So Commissioner Burrows indicated something about found money there, and I'm not, I'm not sure where that's coming from. So I can't answer that question simply because we've never had an issue with the, the fee itself. The rate conversation identified in the presentation, and that was intertwined and right as the new office for the mayor was coming on board, yourself included, those conversations were going together side by side. The previous governing body had been, and I think they could echo in on this for, for me as well, trying to decide if they wanted to pass a rate. And in the fall, we determined that WIFIA was still valuable without the rate, which is why you see in those November and the December presentations that we put the comparison of what happens with or without it. Now, clearly, it's more valuable. That's what staff was conveying. I can't speak to all the conversations you were in. I was out on FMLA, but I can tell you that it has always been the case that with the stormwater rate increase, you could do more. The urgency, we wanted to be able to tell the EPA what we were doing. And clearly, we have an opportunity now to negotiate, and, you know, I don't know what else to say.
Well, that's all great, and again, I do support WIFIA. This is just an ask. When information is presented to this mayor and this elected body, where we have to make informed decisions that have a profound impact on our community, I would hope that in the future, staff would get the information right, that the amounts of money that are available in regards to the commission making an informed decision are accurate. When deadlines, and I know, because I was there and I was told about a drop dead deadline, we have to have this deadline by this date, or it could be problematic. That deadline has passed. So I'm perplexed as to the misinformation, in my opinion, that was presented to me and this commission. And I'm going to say, if no one else wants to say it, that is completely unacceptable, not just today, but anytime moving forward. not just today, but anytime moving forward, where misinformation is given to myself and this commission about millions of dollars that impact this community, where this commission has to make an informed decision. Now, you've walked us through a timeline, but I know the timeline that was presented to me prior to today. And it does not coincide to this PowerPoint that you've just given. And, and that's okay, because moving forward, the message that I want to send loud and clear is that, please, as professionals in this unified government, that whatever information is forwarded to myself and this commission in the millions of dollars where we have to make informed decisions, that it is accurate, that is reflective of where we need to be, so these commissioners can make an informed decision, and I can feel comfortable about moving things forward on an agenda that reflects accuracy. I don't expect anything less than that. And I think that this community deserves excellence, not just for myself and this commission, but this staff as well. Misinformation, whether intentional or not, to me, is unacceptable.
Mayor, Commissioner Townsend wants to speak, but he's unable to raise her hand.
Commissioner Townsend.
Commissioner Townsend, you're still muted?
Commissioner Townsend.
She's having technical difficulties.
Having technical difficulties. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. I believe we had a, a motion from Commissioner Bynum. I take it that was to approve?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve the authorization of the application and fee.
Merkley, second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Davis.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
McKernan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Merkley.
Aye.
Stites.
Aye.
And Commissioner Townsend has sent a text that she does support, that's 10 to 0 that motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our special meeting with this, for this evening. We are adjourned. Thank you.